The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda's been distributed. Does anyone have any amendments or additions to the agenda? If not, it will stand approved as distributed. Uh, next item is to the minutes of the November 5th, 2019 county board meeting. Um, they've been distributed. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
So I moved in second to approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2019 county board meeting. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I don't think I was present for that meeting, so I will not be voting.
I don't think you were either. Alright, great. Any further discussion?
I did miss you all.
We missed you. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Uh, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, we are at the point on our agenda where interested citizens may talk to the board about any item not on the agenda with a limit of five minutes per person or per subject. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I think you know me, Pam Selvig, Health and Human Services Director. I just wanted to take a minute here to introduce one of our staff person. Um, Alison Ron is in our childcare licensing unit, but she has been really behind bringing a new program and a new service to our community. Some of you may have seen a recent Facebook post about this, but she's really been instrumental in bringing Minneapolis Angels, um, to Scott County here, and we have just recently entered into a formal partnership with Minneapolis Angels, um, to provide some supports and services to our youth in foster care. So at this point, I will turn it over to Alison.
Thanks. Good morning, good morning Alison. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you Commissioners for having me. So yes, by day, I'm a childcare licenser here in Scott County, which is a gift. I mean, I enjoy that space. And then outside of my work time, I'm the president of a new nonprofit in the metro area called Minneapolis Angels. Um, we, we have started serving Scott County. Our intention is to serve the seven county metro area, uh, but living and working here, Scott County is near and dear to my heart. Um, in our board, we also have other residents of Scott County, so this was a natural fit. I came to this work as a former recipient of county services, so I grew up in Cottonwood County, a small little county in southwestern Minnesota, and my family, uh, received a lot of services from our county. Uh, my mom struggled with serious mental illness. It was the farming crisis of the eighties that our family went through, and so I just grew up being really thankful and blessed about the services that counties provide, and I knew that one day I would want to be in a position to give back. And as life played out, um, I was able to finish my college education, um, come up to the metro, become a resident of Scott County, um, and an employee of Scott County, and then an opportunity arose about a year and a half ago, uh, where we learned of an organization from Austin, Texas called Austin Angels, and they had put out a call to bring their organization and their model, um, throughout the nation. And so a number of us from the metro area came together with our hearts softened to serve children and teens in the foster system, as well as their foster parents. I've heard in this very room, as we've talked about, uh, that we just have an ever-increasing need for foster parents, and yet 50% of foster programs close within the first year, and often that has to do with feeling lack of support, um, feeling alienated, um, and not really knowing who to go to, because the privacy of our children and our most vulnerable is of the utmost, but that can be a challenge when you're actually caring for the kids in care. So what I love about Minneapolis Angels is we serve children birth to eighteen through our program called the Love Box Program, so you might have the brochure there in front of you, and then we also serve teens in care from about the age of fourteen, fifteen, on into early adulthood. And the significance of our program, in my view, is that we're different from programs such as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, because we offer wraparound services, not only to the children in teens in care, but also to their foster parents and the families. And our intention is not to take over, we're not a placing agency, we're not a county, but what we can do is come alongside counties and other licensing agencies in order to provide that support that truthfully is not part of a county government obligation. Um, and so we want to support the county in the work that they do, but then also do that, that loving, that relational support in order to keep families feeling loved and seen and cared about. Another unique part of our programs is that should a child, um, go to a trial home placement or move care, we actually follow that child, and so we're not obligated to stay just in one solitary relationship. If a child moves, we can move as well. Our Love Box groups can split, maintaining that support with that original foster family as well as traveling with that child to continue that support. And so we're thrilled to partner with Scott County as the first county in the metro area. It has been nothing but a joy, um, to come alongside our partners here, um, to, to just be able to serve the kids here. We've started our referral process. We partnered officially the beginning of October and already are serving kids, and it's been such a gift to make a difference in the lives of children and families already. Um, and I, I hope that in a year, I can come back and share with you some impact stories of the ways that we've created change, um, been able to help break down those barriers between citizens and our need for foster parents, and really show that these are just kids, these are just families, and through our support, be able to just further the bonds that are already happening and increase our outcomes for kids in care. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Alison? No, we just thank you. Thank you for starting with us in Scott County. We're, we're really happy about the partnership and excited to see where it goes.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Thank you for your time.
Any other interested citizens? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five on our agenda, uh, Scott County Delivers, and Chris Harder will kick us off.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We're here this morning with a large group of folks to talk about early child development and early literacy, and, um...
Many of these same folks were here last year, um, and, uh, so we're going to focus some attention today on changes over the last year. Also, we are aware of, uh, a significant workload for all of you this morning and some time constraints, so we're going to change the formatting just a little bit, uh, to try to get to our best questions more quickly. Um, I'm going to ask the people on the panel to introduce themselves, then I'm going to ask the presenters to introduce just who you are and where you work, and then we're going to move into questions about your role in some of those things later. Jake, you've agreed to do some introductory statements, so after introductions, we'll go to you. Alright? You want to start, Danielle?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Danielle Fox. I'm the Adult Social Services Manager here at Scott County.
Troy Penn with Enterprise Business Technology.
Danny Lenz, Deputy County Administrator.
Jennifer Schultz, um, the Office of Management and Budget. My role on this panel is the co-facilitator of the Collective Impact Educational Prep Group.
My name is Kami Thompson. I'm the Director of the New Horizon Academy located in Shakopee, and I am the Chair of the group with Jennifer.
Jake Grusen, County Library Director.
Lisa Brodsky, Public Health Director.
Kathy Bush. I work with a cap agency Head Start program, and I'm currently in the role of a Family Service Coordinator for the Shakopee area.
I'm Mary Kay Stevens, Public Health Supervisor in the Family Health and Family Home Visiting Programs.
And I'm Terry Furman. I work with Public Health and I coordinate the Follow Along Program.
I'm Lisa Pollard. I am the Learning and Outreach Manager for the library.
I'm Kim Litterner, and I'm an Early Childhood Family Education Coordinator for the Shakopee Schools.
Thank you very much for coming, especially folks, um, who have come from outside agencies. We're just really happy to have you today. Jake?
Hi, thank you. So we're here this morning to talk about early literacy. Um, I think a few logical questions that might pop into people's heads is, like, first, why are, why are we even talking about that? Isn't that a school thing? I didn't know that was a traditional responsibility of county government. But we are, we are talking about it, and we're talking about it for a few reasons. The first is that it's important to our residents. So up on the screen, on page one here, we have our result maps and this livable result, excellent schools and educational opportunities. Among all the things we do, the results we're trying to achieve as a community in livable, that's the most important one to our communities based on the resident survey that goes out every three years. That's the one they care about the most. And the work this group of people are doing and our programs impacts that result. Second, we have county programs that families and their children can choose to participate in, like the Follow Along Program, the Read Mobile visits, early literacy classes. Um, we have those sort of optional programs that we provide that help parents and families, um, raise healthy and successful children. We also have programs that you, you don't get to choose to participate in. Some families have to participate in because of the situation they're in or some of the decisions they've made. So like Child Protection, we engage with families and kids sometimes long before the school districts ever have any contact with those kids and those families. And all of that, uh, to me, and I think to the folks on this panel, represents different opportunities to help move in that direction of making sure we do have excellent schools and educational opportunities, and that our third graders are reading a grade level by third grade. That's a lag indicator of the first eight or nine years, um, of educational preparedness, and we're still at about one-third of our third graders not being proficient readers, and we've been hovering there for five or six years in a row. So that's the result that we're still trying to figure out how to impact and see an increase in those numbers, and that's what the folks here, uh, at the table today are going to talk to you about. What are we all doing to move that work forward?
Thanks, Jake. Okay, could we start out, um, I, I think everybody who's going to speak is at the table. Is that right? I think, okay. What I'd like is to have, um, three or four of you talk about, like, what are, um, what are, like, three strengths or things that are stronger or better today in, in the programming that you're providing and the outcomes for kids in our communities when we compare to last year? Like, where's the growth? And then panelists, I'm going to invite you to jump in on, on your questions.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
I'm Kathy Bush. I work with Head Start. The Head Start program, as you may know, is a federal program, primarily federally funded, that's an anti-poverty program, um, but certainly, um, of high importance is school readiness for that program and, um, strong literacy programs. So, um, some of the things that I have observed and learned from others in our program that have changed or are improving are we do, um, assessments of our children, and the program I work with serves children ages three to five. Um, we do an assessment three times a year with a, a tool called Teaching Strategies Gold. It's a very good tool used nationally. Our scores have increased quite a bit over the last couple of years, particularly in the area of literacy, so we're pleased about that. Um, not that we don't want to continue to improve, but we, we are seeing improvements. We also, um, work very closely with parents in our program. Um, we're working not only to educate children, but to educate their parents as well. Many of our parents come in with, um, not having a lot of education themselves or, or hoping to have more education, so we do, um, encourage parents and help to support them to get a GED or High School Diploma or Higher Education. We have more parents participating in those kind of programs in the last year, uh, and we're pleased with that. We also have expanded a program called Early Head Start, so now we are working with parents, um, actually from pregnancy, um, up to age three. So we have taken some of the funds that have, were allocated previously for ages three to five and converted those to Early Head Start, because we feel it's, it's more effective to work with the parents of these children at a younger age. These are all parent, they are, these are all parents living in poverty. We've had a, a couple of challenges, um...
Can I, could I interrupt you for just a second? Could we just, can we stick to, like, the pieces that are going well just for a second? And panelists, are there pieces about... That's okay. That's, um, are there pieces of that that you'd like to ask about?
Yeah, can you just speak a little bit towards how you're targeting those highest need populations, whether it's children who have experienced trauma, racial disparities, children with disabilities, and how has that impacted...
That's a good question. Um, I do the enrollment for Scott County. Um, there's a formal application process, and we are very fortunate to get referrals from a lot of other partners in the community. That's prescribed for us from the Federal Head Start program. Uh, we first will enroll children who are, um, in a homeless situation. Homeless does not necessarily mean that they're on the street. They may be doubled up with another family member, member, or going through a transition, but we, we target homeless. Uh, after that, we look at, um, children who have an identified special need. Um, we then go to foster families as the next group, and then it's by income, so if they're below the federal poverty rate for their family size, they enroll next, and then, and so on, until we reach that, um, federal poverty rate. We very rarely enroll for some, somebody who's older or above that poverty rate. We will enroll four-year-olds first and then three-year-olds. Um, a person who gets in as a three-year-old will automatically be enrolled the second year if they wish to be. Um, we always ask, do you have transportation? Because, uh, we are no longer funded with transportation. I can address that later, if that's a barrier.
Thanks.
And we, I should also say, we, we consider very strongly any referral that we get from a county worker, a school, somebody with the school system.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
You asked about going well, and I, I think we realize that we cannot make change in kids' outcomes unless we all partner and work together, and that is the thing I think has most changed in the past two to three years, is that we realize that it's not about just what kids learn, it's about the homes they're in, it's about the families they're in, and, and getting all that kind of support. So partnerships are huge, and so when we think about all the things we're doing, like assessments and alignment to schools using the same language literacy curriculums aligned with the schools, it really is so much deeper than that, that kids have to know how to do school and have to have that internal, "I, I can do this," because, um, as kindergarten teachers say, "I can teach a kid anything if they're ready to learn," but if they are internally ready to learn where they're at. So one of the things I'm grateful is, we've partnered with, um, Public Health in providing the Ready for K classes for parents with five different age groups, babies, ones, twos, threes. Um, we've aligned with Head Start, and we're using T S Gold for assessments and things like that. Um, last year, we received a mental health grant from public schools, did, and we learned a lot from that. We now have a connect therapist at the Central Family Center, and her caseload's full. So it's really getting into these kids' homes and with their parents, uh, and also, you know, hitting those high target groups, um, that are below the poverty level, and so serving them in Head Start, serving them, um, with scholarships, um, in the, in the childcare, um, industry, and serving them with scholarships at, um, the preschool level within districts like the Shakopee Schools. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I think I'd be remiss not to mention some of the other collaborations. I completely concur with what you're saying, but, uh, as you know, the Birth to Five group has been meeting to talk about, which is county staff and, um, an increasingly broadened community participation, talking about how we can do better in early childhood for, um, families where substance use is a challenge, to, to do some decreasing of, um, out-of-home placements, and there've just been wonderful conversations and relationship building, and we're really working hard on what our measures, um, will continue to be moving forward. There've been collaborations with the WIC, with all these partners at the table, the Educational Preparedness Group, there's just a lot of discussion and effort going on towards how we build the foundations for kids so that they come ready to learn. Those, um, literacy and language skills start very early, even with a healthy birth outcome. Uh, and so how do we continue to support families, particularly those who have some obstacles to being able to provide an optimal environment for their kids?
Nice, thank you. Lisa, with the, you were going to kind of man the data piece of this. Um, are there pieces of the data that stand out for you as areas that you think are significant areas of growth?
Yeah, I think, um, I think, uh, we're a little bit smarter than we were last year, so I think that, I would consider that a success. Um, we've really been focusing on, um, trying to figure out what's going to make the biggest difference, so who's, and who's most at risk. Public Health really likes to look at those, um, who are the, uh, the ones who are at risk. So we've been doing some data analysis in Scott County, um, looking at, um, you know, we know from best practices that kids should be screened at three, and we're hearing about kindergarten surprises showing up on the first day of school, and they haven't been screened. So we really did a deep dive data analysis on that, and we found that kindergarten surprises really aren't the issue here in our county. In other counties, it happens, but it's not here. What we did also note, though, that there is, um, uh, screening at three is making a big impact. We found when we, uh, did some data correlation that as the percentage of children in Scott County, um, when they were screened at three, as they increased, third grade ra, reading levels increased also, and if they were screened at five, the more kids that were screened, um, at five instead of three, the third grade reading decreased. So that is an issue for our county. Kids are getting screened, but they're not getting screened on time, or they're just getting screened too late, so we really want to get them in at three, and that really seems to be having an impact. The other piece that we did a deep dive analysis on is, are those risk factors that we have, have talked about. Kids, um, kids, Hispanic kids are 179% times higher risk.
Can you give us a page number?
That would be on page seven and eight, so we really looked at who's most at risk. I mean, we cast this really wide net when we're sending out, um, materials, et cetera, but if we really want to look at who is most at risk to not meeting those reading standards, we looked at race, um, poverty, uh, they're 186 times hi, at higher risk of not meeting it. Kids who speak a different language at home are 201% times the risk of not being proficient at third grade. Children in, in child protection are also 152% times not, um, meeting those standards. So if we really want to focus on where some of those significant gaps are, um, that's really kind of where we want, we should be targeting our effort. Um, some other, uh, progress we've made since we last met is, we've met with the Shakopee School District, and we're currently developing, uh, data sharing agreement with them as a pilot to really take a look at the cohort of third grade readers and do some analysis of from third grade backwards to when were they screened, uh, well, starting with who's meeting and who's not, when were they screened, what programs did they participate in, um, birth out, you know, from birth outcomes, what were the risk factors at birth, to really try to figure out what is making the biggest difference in these kids, and we'll be moving forward with that shortly.
Right.
So you talked about doing a look back at sort of what happened prior to, do you have data that indicates what happens afterwards, and can you tie these pieces together? I heard you say the screening and the third grade reading levels, you've certainly been able to tie together, or are you able to tie third grade reading to high school graduation rates, and then beyond that, things that those children are then experiencing as adults, whether it's homelessness or experience with corrections or quality of life, how do you connect those pieces together?
Um, I think the school district is already doing that on their, on their end, um, but we haven't, I mean, we could certainly do some of that analysis. We haven't talked about doing that yet, but we know from best practices and from evidence-based research that kids who are reading at third grade are more likely to be, have gainful employment or, and graduation and go on to college, so, um, we could take a look at that as it pertains to Scott County kids.
What are some of the, um, interventions or opportunities available for some of these target groups? So like, um, speaking a different language at home, like, what are our approaches to getting out and having contact, and what's our engagement strategy there?
Want to talk about the book bag?
Yeah, absolutely. I was like, this would be a good topic to jump in. So, um, our Read Mobile is an excellent opportunity to go out into the community. We do a lot of great things in the library for early literacy, um, with our Every Child Ready to Read curriculum, um, but unfortunately, that's of course limited then to people who can make it to libraries. So the Read Mobile has given us a lot of opportunities to go out into the community, and, um, you can see, if you look at the, uh, report on the, the last page, but, that we have, you know, we saw over 1,700 kids last summer. That's a 45% increase, uh, over the kids we saw the summer before, so we're able to get to more kids, and more kids are, have the trust and, um, willingness to come on board, and, uh, many of the communities that we visit, a, a couple in particular have those, uh, high percentage of, um, kids who come from Spanish-speaking families. So our Spanish-language outreach person, uh, you know, that's just an instant connection because she's from the community, she speaks Spanish, um, they're very comfortable with her, and so that's a, a really great opportunity for kids to connect with somebody who talks like, talks like them, looks like them. Parents connect with her really easily, and, yeah, that's some of the great things that we're doing to get out into the community and read some of those books that aren't coming to us in the libraries.
A strong component, I think, in the school is the Peace Family Literacy Program, and it was a federal grant twenty-plus years ago, and we're proud that it's still going because it's, it's an extremely expensive, um, service for families. But, um, we have forty-five non-English speakers, um, which are adults and usually mothers, so a total of over a hundred in the afternoon program Monday through Thursday. I think the benefits of that is that the parents are increasing their English skills with the going to basic ed and ELL. They're getting some parenting and talking about child development, and then their kids are also partaking in some real quality preschool education to ready them for kindergarten, so...
Another initiative that we've done through the Educational Prep Group is the texting campaign. That started in the summer of this year. Um, since we started in the Ed Prep Group three and a half years ago, we've talked about a literacy campaign, getting the word out about how important, um, talking and playing and singing to children are at that young age. So this summer, I think we went live in June, partnered with Think Small. They already had a texting campaign, um, so we were able to jump on board, um, at no cost with their texting campaign, and actually then we were also able to customize some, um, messages that parents can get via their phone, um, specific to Scott County. So we have, um, it's, it's all based on age, so you register based on the age of your child, and then you get, um, messages about your child's development, about activities you can be doing with your child, specific to Scott County. We've had messages out about what's happening at our libraries. Uh, Public Health has, um, provided messages, and so they just come via the, the phone, and, um, those messages, you can sign up in, um, English, Spanish, or Somali. So, um, right now, I think, I, when I just talked to Sarah, we have nearly a hundred families signed up for the texting program, so that's an easy piece that when folks are working with kids and families, they can really just give them the number, they go on their phone, and it's just a message that they get that gives them some, um, great tips for, um, their child depending on their age.
Yeah, it's really a nice customized program, um, and we give those out in our early literacy classes. Um, Blanca, you know, hands out the Spanish version of the book card and talks to families about what this entails and, you know, how to, how to get signed up.
Yeah, we have marketing information too, so if folks are interested in that, they just need to let us know, and we can get that out.
And as I've enrolled, um, parents in the Head Start program or had parent meetings or been on my one-on-one visits in the family home, uh, they've been very excited about the texting program, and those who have been receiving the text feel it's very worthwhile, and it's, it's really pretty easy for us to get...
Yeah, it's a really easy way to get information out, um, and again, all parents can use, you know, basic information about development and what's out there and what's available, and vaccinations, and all of those different important pieces. Can I ask, are there, like, looking at pages seven and eight, where you have laid out, um, some of the, um, the populations of kids that are struggling, um... Are there, is there research, are there best practices about how to, um, reach, um, families in those communities to support screening and literacy? Are there, are there targets, like, through your collaboration in the community, are there targets, or, like, I'm, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, how focused does that work?
I was going to say, I'm not sure about best practices related to that, but I think we are, several of our programs are already touching these families, and so a lot of it is, um, since we're already working with them, so for example, the Child and Teen Checkup Program sends letters out to all kids, families who have children on MA about going and getting their, um, their regular visits and the periodicity, and they, they send them regular, regular letters to remind them, and they call them. So what we've done there is incorporate, when we send out letters, and we send out thousands of letters, we've incorporated the Early Childhood Screening Letter as well. So it's really, we're already touching them. We have this opportunity, and how can we maximize that opportunity as well? We've also been working with the pediatricians to ensure that, um, or to try and get them all on board related to the Reach Out and Read Program, so they're also talking about literacy while the family's already there. And then the home visitors, you want to talk about...
Yeah. Um, home visiting in and of itself is an evidence-based, uh, with research findings to support school readiness and, um, increasing parental abilities and, and other outcomes, and we're already geared towards finding families who are in the greatest need, so by virtue of that, we have that opportunity, um, to connect with families that need more support, uh, regardless of their barriers or their cha, what their challenges are. We have those opportunities to work with them to improve things. And I don't know if this fits here exactly, but one of our newer initiatives is that we have a welcome baby bag. We have, uh, small funding from, um, one of the health plans, and so what we've got in this bag are some educational materials that we can take to families to support parents early on. We've got some important... We've got some important resources in the community. We've got Readmobile information. We've got the texting campaign information. We've got cards from the school districts so they can get connected to ECFE and get on the district radar so that we don't have kids falling through the cracks. We've got some key safety and parenting pieces that we cover in our home visiting programs. And so we see this as an opportunity to get things out to families who just need a little bit more support to know what's in our communities, to get connected.
And then a future plan will be when the county will be taking over WIC in 2021. And those are, we all, we know that those are also high-risk kids due to the fact that there are also kids living in poverty. And we're going to try and incorporate some seamless transition between WIC and school district information and some data sharing with, between WIC and the school and really getting them connected as well as ensuring kids soon as they turn three, because they're in the WIC program until three, as soon as they turn three, have you had your early childhood screen, either walking them over across the street to central family or possibly doing the screening themselves, ourselves here, just to make sure that they get connected to those resources.
And then sometimes we just try stuff. And, but maybe often it doesn't work that well. So with, just not for everybody, specific to the Readmobile. We might hear, for instance, that there are, there are a bunch of kids, or it looks like there are a bunch of families in this particular neighborhood at a manufactured home park. So Lisa, Ally, Blanca, Will, Sarah, let's, let's try, let's try and make a connection there and show up. And sometimes we show up and the kids don't show up. And then we show up again and maybe one kid kind of looks at the Readmobile from afar, but still doesn't come on. And then we show up again and then more kids will come on the Readmobile. And sometimes that goes really well and then we learn about other needs that those kids and their families might have. But, but we fail. I think we're open about that. And our, our, I think our whole county is pretty open about that, that we, we try things and sometimes they go really, really well and we learn from that. And other times we try things that don't go well at all and we do better next time.
And we're always trying to adjust to the situations that we're discovering. Like, you know, surprise, found out one community that we were visiting in, in the Park Lake area, we were seeing all Russian families. And so then it was like a scramble to find someone who could act as a Russian liaison and speak the language and join us on our Readmobile visits. And it's been one of our most successful visits, especially in terms of attracting preschool families. So that's been really exciting. And also just trying to read, like Jake said, what are some of the needs? And we do, it's not quite as random, I think, as, as Jake makes it sound. We do look at, we do look at school data and try to focus on communities that have, you know, high English language learners, high free and reduced lunch. But yeah, you know, so we may come on and discover that, you know, if we're meeting kids after school as they're coming off the bus, they're really hungry. And so to have some kind of quality, healthy snack is going to be really important before they can even get to that point where we can start to talk to them about, what are you reading? How did school go today? And then just like letting that happen. And if, if, if they had an active shooter drill in the school that day, what we may need to do is let kids act those out. And, you know, as much as it breaks our heart to do that, that's what that child needs at that time. So being flexible to meet those situations and what those kids need.
Lisa, when you talked about the WIC being able to easily transition to understanding if the students that are going to the Shakopee School District are meeting assessments or getting the assessments or getting services, is that part of the plan with that data sharing to be able to see where our interventions have helped or what impact they've had with those students as they move through? You know, one of the things in one of the prep conversations, we try a lot of things and we're not quite sure what sticks and what really impacts it. So is getting to that data one of our bigger goals with this data sharing project?
Sort of, yes and no. Really, the goal is to get the kids connected to the school. We know through some data sharing that we did that we, that the Shakopee School District, for example, is missing about 70, well, they have about 75% of the births. So they know about, they're missing about 25%. One of the pieces of that is that they get funding based on the numbers that they have. So they're losing money. So we really want to ensure that they have the whole list. So how do we ensure that between birth and time they're ready for K that these kids get connected and they get on the student census? So WIC starts at birth and actually in some cases there's prenatal moms, so it starts early. And being able to share those addresses with consent, of course, with the school district so the school district can get connected with them will improve the school district's outreach efforts. And then hopefully, the, the hope is that by the time, you know, they are at ready for K, we'll have connected with them and we'll know that they participated in WIC and possibly ECFE, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll have that data that we can share amongst ourselves and figure out, you know, by the time they get for K, to K, did these programs make a difference? Now, we're not going to probably be able to say that this particular program made a difference because there is definitely a communitative, cumulative effect, thank you, of these programs, but at least it's those connections, it's those building, those bridges for these families. So that is the hope and the goal. And hopefully increase, you know, we probably could figure out a baseline of kids in WIC that were not screened at three and to see if we maybe hopefully increase that. But that is the aim and goal.
You probably won't give yourself a pat on the back for it. So kudos to you and to Superintendent Redman, we have Kim here from Shakopee Public Schools, but the willingness to just jump in and see, and see that bigger picture, that the school has data that is important and helpful to, to us and we have data that might be helpful and important to the schools and willing, being willing to just push that vision forward is just worth recognizing you for. I think the, the piece that's important to call, the, the theme that's coming up for me is like, the folks on, from me down have a pretty, we have like these little slivers of impact. We have our, our little programs and it might be a touch for half an hour, it might be a couple of minutes on the Readmobile, it might be part of a day, a couple of days a week. And we want to know what, what is the impact of that? We're doing that over and over. But it makes, it makes me think of what, the last time Paul Nelson was here, right before he retired, somebody told a story about how a person had asked Paul, you know, how are we, how are we going to preserve these open spaces in our county? And Paul's response was, we aren't going to do that. It's, it's the residents, it's, it's them, it's the fam. So in our case, it's the families. We, we aren't going to be the ones, and it's to Kim's point earlier, we're not going to be the ones who can solve this. It's the families and their kids working together. But the person sitting on my right, Kami at New Horizon Academy, you get to spend 40, 50, 60 hours a week with some of these kids and families. So your impact is just different, a different scale than some of the folks on this end of the table.
Yeah, definitely. And we also have children oftentimes from six weeks old or a couple of months old to sometimes seven, eight, nine years old. So we'll have families for several years at a time as well, too. So that definitely can make a big impact on a family as well. So yeah, thank you for that. It is a little bit of a different, a different way that we work with the children than, than some of the county services. But Kami can make a big impact on, on their readiness for kindergarten and the amount of time that we're able to focus on literacy development with children and start that process, even as little as in our infant rooms, with just exposure to a lot of talking and singing and reading to them and hearing vocabulary and trying, our biggest focus with that is just trying to create, kind of like you said, a, a love for learning, a love for curiosity. It's not necessarily about them leaving our places, being able to read or write, although that often is what happens. It's more about them being loving learning and being curious and, and asking questions and having the ability to do that and supporting families in that whole entire process. We do often get families who also are in crisis or children who've experienced trauma or children who are in foster care. So we're also able to impact those families as well, too, in a little bit of a different way. So, yeah.
Thanks. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit about how you're gathering data to inform your practices? It sounds like you have many mechanisms that are formal and informal. What, what are you collecting directly from individuals with lived experience, whether it's children themselves or parents? And how does that inform your work?
I can start with some of that. One of the things we find out from parents in our early literacy classes is we do a end of fall survey with all of them and we ask them about, you know, we ask them what their favorite early literacy practice is, which sounds like a fluff question, but what we really want to know is, do they, do they know what that means? So we get good results on that and we get good results on, are you using things from class outside of class? Because we only see those families, you know, once a week if we're lucky. We, our focus is really giving them the tools to use these practices and, and things at home. So that's one of the things that we look at. On the Readmobile, one of the things we look at is have, do we have repeat kids? Again, it's, you know, if we visit, if they come on once a summer, I doubt, you know, we could say we've had an impact. But if we have kids coming on over and over, we have a chance to, to have an impact with them. And then also asking them the question, you know, did you read more this summer because of the Readmobile? Yeah, it overwhelms me. So that's some of the data that we collect. It's not, you know, it's not a super scientific study, but we are asking those questions and we want to make sure what we're doing, we're accomplishing what we want.
Some of what we do, I think, is so subjective to the client. And so in early childhood, I think wherever you are is there's formative and informative assessments. But in our programs, whether it be the Family Lit Program or Parent Education or those kinds of things, it's, it's having the parent rate them before and after as far as their relationship with their children. Do they know the developmental expectations? Where, where have you grown? Where has your child grown? Things like that. But then we do have some, you know, like the T S Gold. But still, in early childhood, it's authentic assessment over time. It, we don't have the MCAs or something that's just a, this is how a kiddo or a family is doing. So some of that does impact some of the data we see.
And I think that kind of goes to the importance of quality programming because all of us do assessments and assessments are actually a really informative tool and a good partnership between parents and the school to have just time to sit down and talk about development and come up with goals. And all of us are using the exact same assessment tool. So I think that assessments are a really great way to be able to have that one-on-one time with parents and, and take a look at where things are at developmentally and what goals we want to work on moving forward. So.
So even, so like in the follow along program, which is very much earlier, birth through three, before they even get to early childhood screening, I use the data and we look at the data at that to even look at where are the bigger places where we're seeing developmental delays and concerns. And so we try to adapt what we're sending parents in the follow along program to provide additional information. Or we're looking at participation in the program. And so we'll try a strategy, we added post stage and we increased the response rate by 10% by doing that. So we use the data that we have to find ways to improve and meet parents' needs and, and identify where some other concerns might be that we can hopefully build and address.
Nice examples.
Most of us do a community needs assessment, kind of an evaluation. Those are requirements from the state. And comparing school district, community needs assessment with public health needs assessment, you, you get this big picture and it shows who you're reaching, who you're missing, barriers and all those kinds of things.
I think we're going to have, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, in the Head Start Program, we do a family partnership plan. So there's a large assessment with the parents at the, near the beginning of a program year, which we work with. It's a tool, work through the year and then revisit at the end. But to determine what other partners, what, what services has the family been involved with, what, what are their goals, you know, what can we do to support that?
Sure.
And, and it's an ongoing tool. But it's, it's really directed at the parents because we believe very strongly that parents are the most important teachers for the children.
I think we're going to stop at this point and just ask if there are questions from the audience. And also I want to have the chance for the commissioners to ask any questions.
I have a question from the audience.
Question from the audience.
So this is obviously on the board strategies for next year as well. We heard Beacon talk about the importance of stability and the foundation from housing and kids and, and moving forward. Our next workshop even is after this is on kids and the importance of it. So if we were sitting here next year, which I think you will be, what would you like to see different or what would you want to accomplish by next year?
Mine is something that I don't even know how to begin to accomplish it, but I'm also from a, well, we all use the scholarship program, but I think one of the things that can make the biggest impact for children that we're looking at serving is figuring out some sort of way to make quality childcare programming affordable for children. So scholarships is a huge way to support families, but scholarships only goes so far. C cap can only reach a certain amount of children and families. And there's also a whole barrier, families, I just had a discussion, that just are like right above that income qualification. So, and then they kind of have no support. So they're the really struggling families. And I think if children can get in quality programming, it's a big way to impact their readiness for school and outcomes for predicting them to be ready for school and having a foundation of, you know, social skills, a love for learning, early literacy. And I think that affordability for, for childcare is an issue. So.
If you're talking about affordable housing, we're ready to go out there. And so if you think about affordable housing, community spaces is huge because transportation is a barrier. And I think we are all willing to go where the need is. So if there was a space, you know, within a facility, a community or those kinds of things.
Agree. I think we could really reach more families. Because we can't always even fit the Readmobile into all the places that we would like to go.
I don't know if that has anything to do with what you're talking about, but community spaces within living units.
And I'd say in terms of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Readmobile, I, I would like to see us being able to reach more English language learners in languages other than Spanish and Russian. Like we're doing a good job with those languages, but we haven't hit Somali yet. We haven't hit Vietnamese and those are high also in our community.
That would be an addition, additional add on my wish list is I think there are more families out there who could benefit from knowing about supports that are there. To some degree, we're restricted by the resources we have and, and families have a varied gamut of needs. Some don't need intent, long-term intensive, some just need some good connections and things to know about what's out there. It would be lovely to have, be able to have a universal approach to that so that we are connecting with families much earlier before we're finding out that they're lagging at their, at, at early childhood screening or at third grade level or that they're, they're coming into child protection and could have had an opportunity with some additional supports around their challenges.
I think those silos are looking increasingly wobbly to me. If I look out, it's sort of the horizon of our work. We talked about kids before this conversation about kids. You can talk about kids after this conversation about kids. And I think more and more of that is happening. When we talk about housing, we're also talking about kids. When we talk about kids, we also end up talking about housing and jobs and transportation. I would hope a year from now, we talked about kids yesterday and we're talking about kids today and we're going to be talking about kids tomorrow and the day after that as well.
Is that another logical partnership? Like you're kind of embedded in a, in a proposed board strategy around, that includes child protection. Are they another logical partner to your group? Or maybe they participate in your group, I'm not sure. I just have a little bit of history in child protection. So with them being a high-risk population, like where do they, do they have a place on your team, I guess?
Okay. I, I think so. I, I don't want to speak for the whole group, but I think we would invite. I, I don't want to speak for the whole group, but I think we would invite, I would probably say, everybody has a, everybody serves youth, everybody has a place at this table. And we've said there's no silver bullet and there's no, I don't even think silver bucks. I think we need like the whole hunting party. We need folks each pursuing their own game out there. Some of it is housing, some of it's transportation, some of it's jobs, some of its particular programs, as many as we can get. It'll be a better day for us.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Just had to laugh about Jake's hunting reference. You would think he lived here in Scott County instead of Chicago. I, I have a couple of comments and maybe you guys will think of some things, but I was really heartened by, by Kim's statement about in the last couple of years, all the connections that have been made. And what we hear from that is not, I know everybody would like more resources, but this wasn't more resources. This was connecting the things that are already in place, breaking down silos that probably should have been happening decades and decades ago, you know? So really heartened to hear that. My, my hope would be that we can continue to do that throughout the county. That's been quite shock and be centric because we got to start somewhere and it's worked well. But, but I hope next year and in two years, we're hearing about how that's happened all around the county, how we've connected these resources that are already here to better serve families and kids without, I mean, this isn't something, I, I guess if we find a bucket of money, we might put it in here, but we don't have all these buckets of money. Let's make sure we're doing that. And so that was a, a great, great piece. The other thing that I heard, and I serve on the committee, so I should have been thinking of this, is when we see those statistics about kids and child protection and it's like, wow, as a county, we have some real ownership and, and ability to impact that. We, we need to get those folks on the team and, and we can probably be making some real, real strides there. So those were just a couple of the comments that I heard and some real promising things. I, I like the way it started out with, what are the successes? What have we seen in this space where it's, it's been kind of fuzzy, you know? And like Jake started out, what, why do we care as a county anyways about this? Well, we care because we care about our citizens, but long-term it impacts many of our programs, many of our expenditures. So I loved hearing those things. Any other?
Sure, yeah. I would dovetail on that whole idea that it's people coming together. And I heard Jake say that, and Paul's living out already. His legacy's already started one meeting later. That it's not the government that's going to do it, it's the families. The families are going to provide the solution. I heard Cap say that parents are the best teachers. And that to me is, when the people are involved, that makes it sustainable. It's not some government program that we're going to go and fix this thing and we've got a pile of money and a bunch of people. Plus Jake's already learning how to answer these questions. We've got to change this, that, well, we're talking about kids today, now we're talking about kids tomorrow, we're talking about kids. But it is, it, it's a moving target. But the more that the families are part of the solution, I mean, that's, we can't, government can't do that, nor should they, in my opinion, but maybe that's a little too much editorial. So I, I was heartened to hear those two comments and I'm hoping and I think that it is pervasive throughout, at least that side of the table and, and hopefully the rest of what we do is a county. That's my comment. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Even our five minutes was about kids. Would hope maybe even that mentoring would have someplace at the table over the next year as well, so.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks for continuing to, to work on this and thanks for sharing this good, good news with us. All right. We will recess for five minutes to reconfigure the room. Convene the November 19th, 2019 Scott County Board Meeting. We're on to item seven on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. These items are items that have been previously workshopped, explored by advisory committees and are ready for a vote. Unless an item is pulled from the consent agenda, they will all pass or be considered with one vote. I'll go ahead and read the items proposed for the consent agenda. Item 7.1, to approve the final plat of Terra Farm On-Site Marketing Company Incorporated applicant and property owner, consisting of 26 lots and three outlots on 251.02 acres in Section 26 of Credit River Township, three-way development agreement and conservation easements. 7.2, to adopt resolution number 2019-162, designating Scott County Public Works located at 600 Country Trail East in Spring Lake Township as the location for absentee ballot voting for 2020 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 203B.082. Item 7.3, to adopt resolution number 2019-163, authorizing the Property and Customer Services Administration and Elections Department to establish ballot boards for the responsibility to accept or reject ballots for absentee and Uniformed and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act voters. Item 7.4, to approve the agreed-upon service fees between Scott County taxing districts and the Property and Taxation Services Department for assessment years 2020, 2021, and 2022, I think that should say. 7.5, to adopt resolution number 2019-165, approving the lease and operating cost agreements with the Scott-Cover-Dakota Community Action Partnership for use of space in the Workforce Development Center. Item 7.6, to adopt resolution number 2019-164, approving the lease and operating cost agreements with Southwest Metro Intermediate District 288 for use of space at the Workforce Development Center. Item 7.7, to adopt resolution number 2019-161, authorizing a fourth amendment to the agreement with Bolton &amp; Mank Incorporated for County Project 2127, County Highway 21 and Trunk Highway 13 intersection improvement and authorizing a budget amendment of $193,057. Item 7.8, to approve the cooperative agreement between the State of Minnesota Department of Human Services and Scott County Health and Human Services under Title 4D for 2020 to 2021. Item 7.9, to approve entering into a service agreement with Cordent Health Solutions for Drug Testing Services. Item 7.10, to approve estimate of just compensation by market value appraisals for right-of-way for the overlay and associated work for County Highway 42 located in the city of Savage. Item 7.11, to approve dispersments, to approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Item 7.12, to adopt resolution number 2019-160, approving a three-year agreement between the County of Scott and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49, effective January 2020 through December 31st, 2022, and rescinding resolution number 2016-203. And finally, 7.13, to approve payroll processing of personal actions. These are the 13 items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that should be pulled for further discussion? Yes?
Madam Chair, my understanding was 7.1 might be discussed individually. Should we pull that one?
I think we should. Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd move that we pull 7.1. And with that, I'd move the consent agenda as you presented it.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in. And second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 7.1, which we will pull for further discussion. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side? Motion carried. Thank you. We will discuss 7.1, but first we're going to go on to 8.1 to do the presentation of the Morris A. Miller Outstanding Service Award. We have a lot of folks here for, for that award presentation. And the sheriff just ran in to, to take care of that. So after we do 8.1, we will move on to 7.1. So Sheriff Henin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today I get the pleasure of presenting one of our Morris Miller awards. So just a little background on this award for the viewers at home and people in the audience here. The award is named in the honor of Morris A. Miller, who is a high respected in the EMS community and worked diligently for many years in pre-hospital care in Scott County throughout the metro area. His achievements in the realm of public service establish the goals and objectives of the award presented each year by Scott County. In 2002, Scott County Emergency Medical Services Council established the Health Hero Award to honor those individuals and organizations that have performed service above and beyond the call of duty for their fellow citizens experiencing medical need. The primary goal of the award is to recognize and honor individuals or organizations in Scott County who have exhibited exceptional courage, extraordinary decisiveness, and presence of mind and unusual swiftness of action to save and protect human life and property during emergency events. So, and, and that's the challenge of this award. So every day and every week, our firefighters, our police officers, deputies, those are EMS providers, do amazing thing every day, every day, every week in our community. We try to call out some of these actions and like this example too, we kind of get forced of how many people do you, do you recognize? So we kind of focused on this one because of the situation to focus on what happened at the beginning of this call. But we didn't provide, you know, there's still plenty of fire service personnel involved. There's probably more people on the EMS side. There's the emergency room, there's the dispatchers. Tons of people make this, make these cases come together to success. But today we're going to kind of talk about just the beginning of this call and, and what took place and the uniqueness of the circumstances. So on August 17th of this year, the sheriff's office was dispatched to a three-vehicle crash at the accident of, in the intersection of 220th Street East and Langford Avenue in Spring Lake Township. So that'd be County Road 8 and Highway 13. While Deputy Lannan and Edwinson were en route to the crash location, dispatch updated them that there was a citizen had stopped at the crash location, reporting one victim was, or one vehicle was flat and one person was bleeding, another driver was unconscious but breathing. Deputy Edwinson arrived on scene and began triaging the victims involved. He confirmed there are two victims, one was barely conscious and a second was conscious but not responding verbally to his questions. Deputy Edwinson recognized that both victims need immediate medical care, so he requested extradition from the Prior Lake Fire Department and also requested air medical transport to be started. And that's common in a case like this, we start a helicopter, that we can provide the best care and the fire departments need to extricate or to, you know, basically cut the car apart to get, get a victim out so we can service them. Deputy Lannan and Edwinson worked together to provide medical care on the two victims, provided cease fines, stabilization, obtain an open airway to one of the victims in the driver of the Kia that was struck on the driver's door. While he completed an assessment of second victim, there was a driver of the Tahoe to, he had to look at the driver of the Tahoe to determine the injuries there. The abilities of Edwinson and Lannan to complete quick victim assessments allowed for them to focus on the injuries that were life-threatening and take appropriate actions for the best possible outcomes for each victim. The quick recognition of Deputy Edwinson of the need for extrication and air, air ambulance helped in getting more resources to the scene faster so the victims could be treated for any life-threatening injuries in an expedited way. The teamwork of Deputy Edwinson and Lannan displayed during this incident displays their commitment to provide a high level of medical care plus their abilities to quickly recognize during a stressful event that their actions were necessary for the best possible outcome for each victim. After the Tahoe was struck by the other vehicle, it had come to rest next to the driver's side door of the Kia. This prevented the driver's side door to the Kia to be open so the driver could be removed and assisted. Tim Cook, a citizen who had stopped at the crash, without hesitation agreed to hook up his pickup truck to the Tahoe using a tow strap and pulling it away from the side of the other vehicle. Tim moved the vehicle far enough to the ditch so the driver's side of the door could be opened and his willingness and commitment to doing what was best for the community aided in getting the driver of the Kia to the hospital for the much-needed medical interventions. Alina Duty Supervisor Nathan Lane was able to effectively manage and coordinate resources for the evolving scene. He recognized that mutual aid was needed from another ambulance and took the appropriate action to make the request. With the assistance of EMT Joseph Trongard, Alina Paramedic Scott Davis, and paramedic Greg Heronan, and Alina Paramedic Nick Latrell, Duty Supervisor Lane provided assistance with patient care of each driver and help in the coordination of which hospital each injured driver would be transported to. The teamwork of Deputy Edwinson, Lannan, as well as the Alina staff and citizen Cook displayed during this incident displays their commitment to providing a high level of medical care along with abilities to quickly recognize during a stressful event what their actions are necessary and the best possible outcome for each victim.
Is Dr. Stevens here?
Sure.
You get to come up and read the next piece.
Thank you, Sheriff Henin. Thank you, county commissioners. This was a bad crash, guys. It was a real bad crash. I'm an ER doctor by training. I'm a resident of Scott County. I responded with these guys and I couldn't be prouder of the work they did. Anybody that lives in Scott County should feel safe, happy, and very cared for when you have your worst day. These guys really stepped it up and saved some lives that day. Also, pretty proud Minnesotan moment when some, some bystanders are willing to use their pickup trucks in a very Minnesotan way and get out some tow straps and start moving vehicles around. This was pretty remote with the Highway 13 construction. It's, it's a tough place to get to unless you live down where I live. We had, we had some time where we needed to get some stuff done quick. The deputies, our Alina EMS crews, Prior Lake Fire Department performed excellently and thankfully, no one died in this crash. We had a lot of opportunities to lose lives and these guys saved every one of them. I'm proud to serve with them and I'm proud to recognize them.
And on that note, we will present the awards here. And we also have the survivor from this crash, John Mullamister. Do you want to stand up, John, at all and be recognized?
Okay.
And now we'll call out those receiving the award and take a few quick photos and wrap this up. Doc Stevens, you want to assist with?
I'll start with Joseph Trongard. There you are. Can recognize you in fancy.
And Deputy Jacob Lannan.
It's a tough scene as young Jacob, they're both like, what?
And citizen Tim Cook.
Thanks for helping, man.
That wraps up our presentation. Any questions from the board?
Questions or comments from the board?
Outstanding.
Yeah. We, we do appreciate and recognize the work of these law enforcement folks, these first responders, these citizens, the work they do every day. But it, it is wonderful to be reminded of it, to see how all of our agencies can work together with our citizens and save lives. Doctor, thank you for those words about that we should feel good and safe about what's going on in Scott County. We, we, we feel it, we hope so, but to have you say that and to, to see this demonstration of it in action is, is really heartwarming and makes us proud. So, thank you again.
Appreciate it. But with all that being said, I hope I never see you. No, you want to see me here, not there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
And if any of the work recipients and families want to step out, you can hop out now before the.
We'll do some more pictures and. Thanks Mayor Jordan and Councilmember Shu for coming and supporting this award.
All right. Yes, I just was letting somebody else do it. I thought, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for doing it. No, 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 no. I just, I didn't think I unilaterally was missing a decision. Well, we have a presentation first, I think, so. All right. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We're going to go back to 7.1 now and I believe Greg Wagner's going to get us started with a little history on, on this topic and then we'll hear from some others. So, thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioner.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. Double zoom into the property here. So item 7.1 was to, or is to approve the final plat for Terra Farm. Terra Farm is a development in, in Credit River Township. The original, or the entire property that you see here on the site location map is 251 acres comprised of three parcels, properties located just to the east of Texas Avenue and is accessed via 210th Street and Nevada Avenue, which are township roads. The reason for the presentation today is to talk about the approval of this plat and how we move forward. So this application was before the county board last year on September 4th, 2018. The preliminary plat was approved for a total of 56 lots on 251 acres. And I'll put that up on the screen for the board. So this was the approved preliminary plat, again, 200, or 56 lots on 251 acres. At that board meeting, the, the county board heard testimony from an adjacent landowner, John Kane, who owns property to the north of the plat. This testimony was regarding access to his landlocked parcel and if the board, to remind the board, we discovered the, the property had been landlocked since, I believe, the 1940s. Mr. Kane had inquired about this access at the public hearing, which was held before the county planning commission in July of 2018. At, at that meeting, the developer onsite marketing had agreed to meet with Mr. Kane following the public hearing to see if they could work out some resolution as to how to get access to his property. That meeting occurred, they could not come to a resolution for that access. Mr. Kane then asked the Credit River Township Board to hold a special meeting, which they did on August 20th, 2018. The town board had previously recommended approval to the county of the preliminary plat as proposed. At that meeting on August 20th, 2018, Mr. Kane and the town board talked about getting access to his property and the board ultimately reaffirmed their recommendation to the county for approval of the preliminary plat as proposed. So then again, this item was brought to the county board for preliminary plat action on September 4th, 2018, where Mr. Kane again addressed the board. The main issue is to get access to his property would be through this area here between lots two and three, which would be phase two of the, of the preliminary plat, or excuse me, phase two of the entire project. Bringing access through there, it was determined that would eliminate two of the proposed lots that the developer had been looking for approval on. So the board recommended approval of the preliminary plat, or excuse me, the board approved the preliminary plat with a recommendation that a condition be added that the developer dedicated easement through the northeast corner of the property. So what is before the board today is a request for final plat approval of Terra Farm for Phase 1. Phase 1 consists of 26 lots and three outlots. So what the developer is asking for is approval of these 26 lots in the middle. This would be Phase 1. Outlot A would be Phase 2, which would be done at a future date. The developer will have to come back through the process to final plat those lots. And then Outlot B would be Phase 3. So what the board is being asked to approve today would be the lots in the center location of the property.
So Madam Chair, Greg, this, this proposal isn't even touching the Kane's property at this point, is that correct?
Correct, Madam Chair, Commissioner Wolf, the Kane property is located up in this corner. So as this first phase is proposed, there would be no road infrastructure constructed through this area that would connect up to the Kane property.
So wouldn't we address this later on when they do that, Outlot A?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wolf, it could potentially be addressed later when they reap, when they come in for a Phase 2. However, what county staff is recommending and the township board is recommending is that through this entire project, the preliminary plat has been approved, going back to this. So the developer has been granted rights for these 56 lots with no road connection. It could be if, in the future, when they come back for Phase 2, if the developer chose to continue to work with Mr. Kane on a solution, they could go that route, but at this point the developer has rights with the preliminary plat that was approved last year. Yeah, so what, what's being asked of the board today is for final plat approval of these 26 lots as well as the three outlots that are shown. Staff did want to lastly note that Mr. Kane's attorney did reach out to both the county and township over the past year, had sent a couple of emails to the county and township board. Both the township attorney and the county attorney's office responded to Mr. Kane's attorney that the county believes that the plat as approved is in compliance with county ordinances and we are moving forward with a recommendation for approval of this final plat based on the approved preliminary plat. I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Commissioner Beard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg, I remember, this is coming back to me and I'm remembering this discussion because I think in the minute show, I made the motion to approve the, the plat as it was presented to us with the cart path between those two lots. But then Commissioner Beard made a motion to allow this little piece on the corner up here, yeah, that one, which when we had that discussion, it seemed eminently sensible that that, we do that instead. But remind me, on this map, it's not showing how that connects the Kane property by going through that corner of the, but what else is not showing on this map here that, that makes that a workable deal?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beard, so the red here outlines the Terra Farm property, the green is the Kane property. There is this five acres here where, if I can sketch in, the, the easement area would get to this five acre piece, which is owned by a Skozatchik family, but that would not get to the Kane piece, but it would at least provide access to that five acres if and when that would develop, could then provide access to the Kane property, I believe is the, the thought.
Did we envision another road in there somewhere to the east of that Terra Farms property that that would, would make that all possible?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beard, so the property to the east is largely owned by Feldman family. And then we have Dakota Avenue here from the north, the territory development from the south, which also has Dakota Avenue. So the long-term plans would be that Dakota Avenue would be the main north-south road through here and then as this property develops, they would be required to provide connections to connect to Terra Farm and to the Skozatchik and Kane property. So it really relies on development occurring to the east.
And if I can do one, a follow-up then, is the Kane property, are they feeling pressure to develop sooner rather than later? Because this extension of Dakota could take a few years. Or is, is that really not a consideration here? It's just that we need something certain because we cannot have landlocked parcels?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beard, I'm not sure of the motivations for the Kane family. I can't, can't speak for them. The, the property has been landlocked for many decades, so it's possible they see, saw this as an opportunity to provide some access, but I believe Mr. Kane's attorney is here if he could speak for his client.
I'm sure he'd be happy to hear them talk about that, I guess.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Wagner? All right, I certainly want to let Mr. Kane or his representative speak. I see the township here, is here in the township attorney. If there's comments, and I know we have the memo from the township attorney in, in our materials. Before we do that, I'd like Mr. Hossevar just to remind of us, of our legal duties here.
Well, this is not a public hearing, so you don't, you're not obligated to let anyone else speak if you don't want to. The title is, is fine, yeah. As you know, there were some issues regarding that, but that's going to be cleared up, so there's no issue about approving the plat as it is today as my office and the assessor and the surveyor all need to sign off on it. Mr. Kane and his attorney have been informed of every, at every step of the way that they have other legal means to pursue to get access to that property. So this board is under no obligation to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Kane or, or Mr. Kane's attorney, whoever would, would like to speak.
Madam Chair Commissioners, good morning. My name is Anton Chescus and I'm representing John Kane and Joe Kane. The Kanes are objecting to the plat to the extent that it does not provide any connectivity to their property through the internal streets as platted. The key zoning ordinance sections are outlined in the township attorney's memo that you've got there. It's zoning ordinance 7 and sections 2-2-2 sub 2 and 7-4 sub 1. Just for a bit of history here, this board has seen the inverse version of this case before. In 2008, when Marx Weber applied for a plat to develop the estates of Liberty Creek, also in Credit River Township, during that plat approval process, the board and the county wanted Mr. Weber to connect adjacent outlots with the buildable lots in the plat through platted streets. Mr. Weber objected because he claimed that that would make the development economically unfeasible, similar to the argument that the developer's making here. And the board ultimately denied approval of that plat. Mr. Weber appealed to the Minnesota Court of Appeals, arguing that these interconnectivity portions of this, of the ordinance were unreasonably vague and therefore unenforceable. And the Court of Appeals agreed. In 2010, the Court of Appeals held that the ordinance as written was too vague to be enforceable. Importantly, when this Weber case was decided in 2010, the ordinance were different than they are today. Right after this Weber decision, this board completed a comprehensive review of zoning ordinance 7, which was approved May 24, 2011. That amendment included changing the language in these two sections to be more clear, so as not to be vague, and to provide connectivity through platted streets to all adjoining parcels. And I'd really invite your attention to these two sections that are outlined. New section 2-2-2 sub 2 now states, "Local streets shall be planned to provide street connections to adjoining parcels." And the relevant portion of section 741 now states, "Streets shall provide for future connections to adjoining unsubdivided tracks." Streets, not an easement, and certainly not an easement that doesn't even connect this, the property. And it's clear from the way the new ordinance is written, that new developments must connect internal streets to adjoining unsubdivided tracks like the Kane property. Terra Farms plat fails to do that. Instead, there's this easement that doesn't even touch the Kane property, goes over a wetland to another, to two other properties that are not developed and have no plans of future development. So this might have been fine before 2011, but under the new zoning ordinance, this plat is simply illegal and it must be revised to include connectivity of local streets to the Kane property. So that's what we're asking for. We're asking for the plat application to be denied until there's a local street that connects all adjacent unsubdivided parcels, including the Kane parcel. And to answer Commissioner Wolf's question, even the portion of the plat that they're requesting approval for today absolutely abuts the Kane property. So, again, we believe this is an illegal plat. If, if approved, we are prepared to file a writ of cert and appeal the decision to the Court of Appeals, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
How many acres is that Kane property?
35 acres. There's that five acre.
And they gave that five to somebody to cut wood or something.
I beg your pardon?
They gave that other five for somebody that needed wood for fires or for their homes.
Before my time.
Yeah, okay.
That sounds right.
And how many lots do they, could they get out of that Kane property?
Anywhere between four and seven. They've had some architect or renderings already that.
It's not a lot of water in it? It looks like a lot of water.
There are. That's why it might be four instead of seven. But we've, we've seen a plan for seven. I mean, it all depend where it connects certainly and.
Because would it make more sense for them to come off that, I don't know, just?
I mean, the, the, we're not arguing for that it should be in a specific section, right? We're arguing that there's a new plat here that abuts this, this track and it must be connected according to our zoning ordinance. So it must be connected with a street, not with an easement, with some type of street.
Other questions, Commissioner? Or did you have something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about this, because remember, we, 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 we're trying to do the right thing here. The landlocked parcel was not our, we didn't make that, it's not our circus, but we are, what's the phrase, not our circus, not our monkeys, but we're making this ours because there is a, a project going in here to the south. But there's still undeveloped land to the east that looks pretty accessible there and I think that's what we were hanging our hat on whenever Commissioner Beard made this motion that we set that aside and make a clear intent going forward that when that other property does sell and develop, I guess that would be the Feldman property, that they know there's an easement there and the planning commission that looks at that will make it clear that there is an easement to access those four to seven lots on the Kane property there next to the wetland. That, that strikes me as a reasonable thing because Kanes apparently are not willing or, or able or wanting to develop now. To me, just as a common sense guy, I'd think, why didn't Kane just sell this property and roll it all into the same parcel from the get-go if, if this is a big issue? That would have solved the landlocked issue, but you know, it's their property, they don't have to do that. So also then, if that's the choice they made, I think there's another solution and that's, it's coming back to me now why I voted to put the easement on there for the future because there was an opportunity to sell or become part of a larger picture, they've chosen not to, that's fine, but there is also an opportunity in the future at another time to solve this problem without impeding the progress of the current landowner. That's, that's where I'm thinking about this. Looking at our ordinance, it strikes me that the, the amendment that Commissioner Beard offered in September a year ago does satisfy what we're trying to do. We're making a provision for a future connectivity in a future plat. And so I see that we're going to be okay with that. Now, I'm not a lawyer and never even played one in a high school play one day, so I would let Attorney Hossevar speak to it if he wishes to, but that's just, I guess, the way I'm thinking. My memory is being refreshed as we talk this through.
And if I may, Madam Chair, Commissioner, two things to that. Number one, there's no argument here that any connectivity at all is provided to the Kane property. They've given an easement to, over the plat, to a property that does not, to, not to the Kane property and over, you know, over a wetland that is not a street. I understand the argument that a future development might come in, but the ordinance speaks to developments that are going in and how they're impacted to adjacent properties. And this is exactly the issue that the 2011, 2011 amendment was designed to fix.
Well, Madam Chair, could we not then enforce some street connectivity issues to the property to the east? Because there's no given certainty that Dakota is going to go through, so we should encumber this current developer, current property owner to take care of other things in his plat that may or may not happen in the future. Not being argumentative, but in a way I am, just to kind of, I guess, think about what we're doing here. Do we need to, to make, do we need to encumber this property to accommodate streets to the east? I don't think so. I think that Dakota Avenue going through is pretty certain. And I'm looking at the, I don't see it as a wetland on this map, but they don't have wetlands delineated on our satellite photo. They look like trees, but, yeah, okay. Well, I'm speaking beyond my, beyond my skillset here, but I'm just thinking as someone who's got to make a policy call here in just a moment, that I don't think we're disadvantaged or hurting this property, the Kane property, that we certainly do not want to do that. In fact, it's been landlocked for years and I think we've given them an out coming up here in the near, near term. Near term being maybe 10 years, but still.
John Kane's 80 years old, so, you know, it's, I mean, I, I, I understand what, what.
Yeah, I understand.
Other comments or questions? Other comments or questions? All right.
One question for the attorney. There was a comment about a title issue. You couldn't assign the milars until the title issue. Is that unrelated to this?
No, it's completely unrelated to the Kane property.
Completely unrelated, okay. Then I won't even bring that question up.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
I just was going to throw out there, Madam Chair. So should this Terra Farm, should they make connections to all of the adjoining property?
I think that was Commissioner Beard's point.
It was my point, yeah.
Yeah, you're looking for an answer.
I just, no, I just...
It was kind of a hypothetical question, Madam Chair, but...
I get it. Yeah, I get it. I see township representatives here, any, since I know it's not a public hearing, but we're allowing all parties to have at least one shot to speak to the board. Mr. Rupi, thank you.
Yes. For those of you who I've not had the pleasure of meeting, my name's Bob Rupi. I'm with the law firm Cory and Rupi. I am the town attorney. And I believe you have, and Packet was alluded to, a memo that the town board asked me to prepare on their behalf to lay out their position with regard to this as the, even though we are not the land use authority at present, we're working towards that end with, in partnership with the county, but we're not the land use authority, we're a recommending body. But as the Weber case was alluded to, we tend to be dragged into any lawsuits. We do have an interest in this. We also do not believe that the town, County Board or the town board is in any way violating any of the county ordinances regarding this. The easement that is being provided to, in that northeast corner, was not just decided unilaterally. We, the township staff, contacted Mr. Holling, who was the engineer for the Kane property, to talk about alignments. We looked at the ghost plat that they had prepared, the different potential lots, and we offered them an easement in that northeast corner in any area that they felt would be appropriate. So it was not something that was done unilaterally, but it was something that was given to them to at least to weigh in on. And so, and the other thing that I want to make it very clear is, the bucket of rights, the property rights that the developer has that was granted by this body at the time preliminary plat was granted, has been granted, subject to them providing an easement in that northeast corner. At this late date, I don't believe you have the ability to unilaterally change those, those rights that they have. If we could, we would have liked to have seen some other conditions placed on preliminary plat that would have given us more access over in the northwest, southwest corner of that property for future connectivity. We've now since realizing that we do not have that ability to impose those, have worked with the developer to grant those easements. The last comment I would make on this is, it's been alluded to here, but under 164.08, if the developer, or if the Kane property wants to develop and they want access to a public road, all they have to do is petition the town board for access under 164.08. It's mandatory because they have enough land. We have to provide them access to a public road over the lands of others. So we would then process that request. We'd hold the required public hearings. The town board would determine a, what land, where that would go, giving due deference to the petitioner's request where they proposed the access to be. If we decide to do it in a different area, we have to tell the court or in the resolution establishing the cartway why we are departing from their request. But the difference is, is that the Kane property would have to pay for that. It's not something that is there. So at any point in time, under Minnesota law, this cartway statute's been in existence for 100 years, the Kane property always has the ability, just by merely filing the petition, to come into the town board and by law, we have to establish them access to a public road. That may be to, through the plat in Terra Farms, or that may be to Dakota through other property, but the land has to be purchased at a marketable rate. And we determine that, and if anybody disagrees with our determination, then they can appeal to the district court and it's basically a do-over. But that right exists. So if these, if the property owner, Mr. Kane or Joe Kane, want to develop their property right now, they need access. There is a mechanism under state law to grant them or any other landlocked piece of property that meets the requirements. It's mandatory, we have to establish that public road. And we're willing to do that. But in this case, this is something that, given the ghost plats that the town engineer saw, this was a reasonable area for an easement. It's my understanding from the developer that those easements have already been prepared and signed, and it's a requirement in the developer's agreement. So with that, unless you have any questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the punctuation exclamation point and clarifying that. With that, Madam Chair, I'll move 7.1. Let me get back up here to the top and see, read it exactly as for the record. You do. Okay, here we go. Thanks. My computer's... I move that we approve the final plat of Terra Farm Onsite Marketing Incorporated, applicant and property owner consisting of 26 lots, three outlets on 251.2 acres in Section 26 of Credit River Township, the three-way development agreement and the conservation easements noted. Madam Chair, I'll move that, and if it gets a second, urge it's...
Second. So I moved and seconded to approve the final plat of Terra Farm according to 7.1. Further discussion, questions, comments on this matter? Any further discussion? Seeing no further, any further discussion? I'll go my three times. See none, let's proceed to vote.
Slowly, will you please?
All in favor of approving the final plat of Terra Farm consisting of 26 lots and three outlots on 251.02 acres in Section 26 of Credit River Township, the three-way development agreement and the conservation easements, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 9.1, and Mr. Nathan Hall is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject property here is located in Section 16 of Credit River Township, north of County Road 21 and west of Natchez Avenue. The public stable facility is located on four parcels with a total acreage of 29.27 acres. The properties are zoned Urban Expansion Reserve and Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster, both of which, both of those classifications would permit public stables as interim use. The property has operated as a public stable since the early 1970s, but there's not an active interim use permit on the property. The applicant is purchasing the property and would like to pursue official approval for the use. The applicant is not proposing any new structures on the site. The site currently includes a single-family home and clubhouse, a 5,000-square-foot pole building, and a 26,400-square-foot stable with also a, with 66 box stalls and an indoor riding arena. There are six outdoor paddocks and two outdoor arenas with a minimal pasture area. The stable would maintain the current maximum capacity of 66 horses. And I will note that Scott County staff and Soil and Water Conservation District staff have reviewed this request, and they have provided memos that are included in the board's packet with, and their comments have been incorporated into the recommended conditions. When the item was presented at the Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning Advisory Commission, on October 14th, the primary topic of discussion was one of the conditions recommended by Credit River Township. And Credit River Township had four recommended conditions, three of which were not topics of discussion, but the first item, first recommended condition, we have an email here as well from Mr. Rupi, the township attorney, where he clarified the language of that recommended condition. The town board recommended a condition stating that the interim use permit shall terminate 10 years from the date of approval, as well as upon the approval to subdivide the property or upon the sale of any portion of the property. Setting up an automatic termination date in an interim use permit is legal under county planning statutes, but has not been a typical practice for interim use permits in the county. Planning staff recommended that the interim use permit be reviewed but not terminated when the property is further subdivided or incorporated into municipality. The planning commission was in agreement with the town board's recommendation to set a termination trigger when the property is further subdivided or upon the sale of any portion of the property. So that would be part B and C of the recommended condition. But they were split on the automatic 10-year termination date. After much debate, the planning commission passed a motion incorporating the town board's two recommend, recommended termination trigger events, subdivision of the property or sale of the property, but did not recommend the automatic 10-year termination date. The motion passed on a three-to-two vote with one member abstaining and one member absent. The town planner has provided a memo explaining the rationale behind the request to send an automatic 10-year termination date, and a representative of the township is here as well to present the rationale. The applicant is also present. Should the board have any questions for the applicant? And myself and other staff are available if there are any questions.
All right. Before we move on, I know the township wants to address this issue. Commissioner Beard?
Just a brief clarifying question. Nathan, remind me who was it was that applied for the IUP? Was it the applicant? Or were they looking for a conditional use permit? Did they specifically apply for an interim use permit?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beard, the applicant did apply for an interim use permit.
He did, okay.
It would be an interim use permit would be the, a public stable would not be a conditional use in this district.
Okay, all right.
It would be an interim use.
Thanks for clarifying. Thanks, ma'am.
Any other questions for Nathan? Great, thank you. We may have more. Certainly, Mr. Rupi.
I think we've resolved this matter.
Well, good.
If this is the county board had a chance outside while you were conducting your other meeting. And right now, you, we have, the other conditions that the township recommended, Conditions 2, 3, and 4 are not a problem. What was an issue was Condition Number 1, and what we have worked out with the applicant as the township is eventually going to be taking over planning and zoning in the foreseeable future here, would be that the, Part A would be modified from 10 years to 15 years. And Subpart C, the sale of any portion of the property, would be removed. The reason for that is, that gives a specific timeline that the applicant would know that they have the ability to operate their stable. It would also give them the ability, within that 15 years before it's renewed, or if it, after it's been renewed, to be able to then sell the property. Because right now, if they wanted to sell...
It would be terminated.
Any rights that they have would go upon the sale of the property. They would like that ability to be able to build the business up, get it running, stay a good neighbor with all the other, other competing interests in the township, and then be able to sell it. And that, with these changes, they would be able to do. So they are recognizing the termination on the approval to subdivide the property because we don't know how many acres would be left over after the sale, and they need so many acres in order to operate a stable for the, for the animals to safely be there. So with this change, the applicant would be able then to be able to sell during the term of the permit, whenever it is existing, and that would give them an economic advantage, which we fully agree to as the township. So our recommendation as the town board would be to approve Condition Number 1 with Subpart A being modified from 10 years to 15 years and to remove Subpart C upon the sale of any portion of the property. And if my understanding is that is agreeable to the applicant and the property owner.
And you, sir, could you state your names so we know who's who?
My name's Leon Carrick.
Okay, so you're one of the applicants?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. So, yeah, I am not, I'm, I'm never going to question, or I'm going to go against an agreement made like this, but I do have just a question or two.
Sure.
I just want to make sure, so, and this may be for Nathan, if 15 years goes by, I assume Credit River will be the planning and zoning authority, but if they weren't, if this was still a county issue, the applicant could reapply?
Yes.
Right. And I assume you're going to have that same kind of thing.
Our zoning ordinance that we're anticipating, as was stated in Ms. Nash's memo, is consistent with the counties. We're not, we're not going to change the zoning on this. What we're trying to do is merely take your zoning ordinances as they are right now and remove anything that obviously doesn't apply to Credit River.
Right.
Everything else would stay the same. That way, people that are applying for things in the future would know exactly sort of what the process and procedure and stuff would be.
Wonderful. Commissioner Wolf?
I would make the motion, Madam Chair, to approve the request for an interim use permit to operate a public stable. Leon Carrick and John Benkey, applicants in Penning, Robert Eckert, property owners in Section 16 of Credit River Township, moving from 10 years to 15 years for the time period and removing C upon the sale of the property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to...
I have a comment.
Yep, I do too. I just want to, Commissioner Wolf, if you could clarify your motion. I'm looking at, at what we're approving, not, not the township's recommendation. So I just want to clarify that your motion is to accept the interim use permit as distributed, but what we would be doing is adding a 15-year...
15-year.
...time limit and removing the condition about, upon the sale. So we're not moving from 10 to 15 because what we have in front of us has nothing, right?
Yeah, sorry.
And do you agree with that?
Yes, I just have a comment.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, now, any discussion, Commissioner Ellerick?
Well, I'm, first of all, really glad you came up with this agreement because I don't like it when government puts conditions on a property that restricts investment in that property or reselling that property, you know? The conditions were pretty onerous before you reached this agreement, and I think it's a great agreement. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Great. Commissioner Beard?
Same theme here. So while we've got the apple with the bite out of it, what is, is this the new best practice? And I don't mean to be...
It's not a new best practice. It's actually in-state statute that under the interim use statute, you're supposed to have some sort of a termination, what, some event certain, to tell the applicant when, and the government, when that interim use. And that's the whole difference between an interim use and a conditional use. A conditional use runs with the land and never expires. As long as you don't violate the conditions, and the government, either the county board or the town board, whoever's the land use authority, would have to go and naturally hold hearings and revoke a conditional use permit, and then it would probably go into the court system whether that was appropriate or not. However, with an interim use, they recognize that under Minnesota law as a competing interest. This is in an area, and this is your urban expansion reserve. Well, that's because it's becoming more urban. And things like this, there's going to be competing interest. Example, even when we were at the town board meeting discussing this issue with all the residents, you know, the applicant, the applicant's representative, supporters, you know, and members of the town board, board their horses at this thing, at this stable. But one of the things that people were talking about that night was the gun club. Well, the gun club has a conditional use permit because interim use was, weren't offered back then. I can't change that as a town. We're subject to whatever they do. As long as they don't violate their permit, they get to exist. That may not be compatible with a new urbanized Credit River Township. So you've got all these competing interests. Well, the way the legislature has handled this is by interim use permits that allow the county board or the town board or who, the city or the, whoever's the land use authority to put that in their zoning ordinance that allows an interest, but maybe not forever, but for a limited period of time or a condition, and then it can be revisited. I've been doing this for 30 years and very, I don't know, very rare, I can't think of any off the top, so it's got to be very rare, that any of these permits have ever been just not renewed. But what they do do is look at them and say, do we need a new condition here? Is there something, is manure issues becoming a problem? What are people complaining about? What do we need to address so that everybody can stay kind of happy in terms of the neighborhood? That's what the idea is. One of the concerns that I have in working with the towns here in Scott County and working with you as a county board is the language in the documents that say you have the right to review. Well, that just means you have the right to review it. That doesn't mean you have the right to change anything. And to the extent... And to the extent that the county board believes that that language gives you some authority later on when there may be a problem that you didn't address in one of your conditions, if a property owner is willing to work with you, great. If they're not, and they go get their land use lawyer, the land use lawyer would be able to say, no, you don't have that authority. So that's just one thing that I know has been an issue for me, and since I'm here and I'm not normally here, I might as well get it off my chest.
That's right. Exactly.
At least I can sleep tonight, since I told you, you know? And that's, that's the kind of the difference between the interim use permits and these conditional use. Conditional use, clearly, for major investments, where you're building buildings and everything, usually those types of things are looked at in, by a body such as yourself when you're doing your zoning, as a conditional use. However, in areas like this, where it's urban, becoming more urban, that's why you did this as an interim. You guys made that choice, not the town board. And you did that because of the fact that you recognize that's gonna become more urban. And especially in this situation, where the sewer pipes are up at Savage, and they will have to come down because the Met Council is telling us they will. You know, it's not gonna be, that's why the question was earlier today, is how much time do we feel that we could allow this permit to exist without impeding our ability to develop those areas in the future with urbanized uses? And that's why we said fifteen years. And so we're trying to accommodate everybody. It's difficult. It really is.
So enjoy the tension, is what you're saying. Enjoy the tension. There's always that tension, I mean, it's tension when you're talking to an IUP.
It is. I appreciate your time this morning, and I thank you for allowing me to appear before you.
And even though Commissioner Beard did ask the question, we're not gonna pay a bill for that.
Exactly. Right.
Now, come on, guys. We work in partnership.
You are not, we do not have a client attorney relationship. Just wanna make sure there. Thank you, Mr. Rupi. I think there's some other reasons why we have the interim use conditions here, just based on some of being a highly quickly developing county, based on some of our commitment to agriculture and maintaining it. So I agree with what you said, but I think there's a little bit more to it about why the board has went that way.
Yes.
And maybe that's why Mr. Schmitz is hovering there this day.
That's exactly it. Mark and I have had a lot of discussions about these things recently, but I just, but you gave me an opportunity, and I'm taking it. Thanks for the question.
Yep. And thank you, and it's a point well taken. So we do have a motion and a second. Did we vote? We didn't vote?
No. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Rupi is absolutely right. We do have the ability to put a time limitation on an interim use permit. It has not been the practice of staff. I'm glad to see the applicant and the township have come to a consensus on this item, and the timeframe has been pushed out to that fifteen years rather than a five year. It is difficult for people to make investments in property when you have a short timeframe with a termination hanging over your head. So it's not something we take lightly, and it's not really part of our practice. And it's not something you'll see very frequently from a recommendation from staff coming forward. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, and I especially appreciate that in relation to our agricultural uses. Commissioner Ulrich.
Well, and maybe this doesn't need to be said, but it is a good agreement, because not only did you extend the time, that wouldn't have really, probably even mattered if you didn't remove the sale clause, because, you know, the sale, removing that is probably as important as extending the term to the owner, I'm guessing. So that was a good agreement.
All right. There's a motion?
One last.
Oh, yes. I know I was gonna say any, I was trying to get my discussions out, but whatever.
Ma'am Chair, can I just point out, I just wanna thank, I see Donna Hentges from the planning commission is here tonight, or today, and they struggled probably worse than we did on this thing, or maybe not worse than I did.
We didn't have to.
Thank you for your work, and we appreciate that, so, thank you. And thank you to the town. I see Chris Costick here from the town board, so, and the applicants. Thank you.
It's the motion on the table, so we're okay.
Well, that's my question, is the deal was struck between the applicant and the town board as we amended this. Is that part of the record? Or doesn't it really matter?
It doesn't matter. It's just, because all we are is a recommending body, all they are is a recommending body. This is our recommendation to you. Now this is up before you for a vote. If you agree with our recommendation, then you can adopt it. If you wanna do something completely different, you have that right.
And I do think we've clarified that is the motion, that it's the interim use permit as presented to us, not the town board's recommendation as presented, except adding the fifteen years, removing the sale clause.
Removing the sale clause.
Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item number ten, committee reports and commissioner updates. Commissioner Wolf, would you get us started?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. On the fifth, Newmarket Township had their monthly meeting. On the seventh, I was out at the Sand Creek Township meeting. They had a couple issues. There's still the solar panel issue that is getting squared away. On the eighth, I was at Scale, very nice presentations there. On the twelfth, met with the Cedar Lake Township chairperson. There's a couple things going out there. One thing in particular is they're starting to get to be campaign signs going up, and I've actually seen campaign signs up for months now. And you can't have those up until sixty days before an election, so that's the rule. Am I right?
You're right.
So anyhow, they've been calling in, maybe you've heard about it, but. And then also on the twelfth, the planning and zoning met with a couple of issues. On the thirteenth, Metropolitan Emergency Services Board met, accepted a few grants that actually applied to Scott County here. Had a meeting also that day with planning and zoning, and a person that's looking to buy the old Campahooka, which is out at Fish Lake, the little resort that people, campers and whatever, and a young couple's looking at buying it and doing some things. So they had a lot of questions, which, and great questions, probably what the place needs is someone that's young, wants, got a little vision there, so it's gonna be fun to see what happens there. On the fourteenth, I35 Solutions met, and we had a discussion a little bit about our website and how that is gonna look there that evening. Spring Lake Township had their monthly meeting, not much going on there. On the sixteenth, I'd already been there once for the ribbon cutting, but the Hokachata Tea, that new spiritual center out for the tribe, had a big public open house there, very well attended, very nice, they had people in all their tents and giving demonstrations and stuff, so it was a really nice thing there. On the, yesterday, the eighteenth, the Minnesota River Basin, met down in Mankato, a few hundred, three, four hundred people, I guess, probably were there, talking about how to clean up the river. I guess I thought there'd be more answers than there were, but it's, you know, some people say it's been dirty for five hundred years before, have you heard that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know, they're trying to clean up something, maybe that wasn't dirty to begin with. Anyhow. Then they had a groundbreaking for the housing out at Jordan yesterday. It was very nice, very well attended there, and I seen some of the younger ladies that residents there, but grown up. And then Prior Lake had their meeting and workshop, and then most of the workshop, Commissioner Beard was there also. They had just the volunteer little recognition and telling about what they've done for the year. One note, where the item was that there have not been a lot of accidents or things happening in Prior Lake, you know, with traffic, because, right, we couldn't get through there. So anyhow, and then after that, the, so accidents and tickets were way down. Anyhow, it's all mostly opened up now, so, but then after that, they had the fair meeting last night, the Agricultural Society of Scott County, very well attended. In fact, the speaker said that, you know, she talked to, in charge of it there, Rhonda Kachera, talked about, you know, some fair places, you know, counties have eight, ten people show up to their meetings, and I think there was over a hundred?
About a hundred.
Hundred people there. So the fair is alive and well in Scott County. They had very good numbers this year. They got some very good programs, and new exhibits, and new venues happening next year, so look for that, July twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. We'll see you at the fair, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
You make that?
What's that? Oh, the vets lunch, yeah, that was, yeah, I did, thank you, sorry.
All right.
You start with that.
All right, all right.
Commissioner Beard.
I am gonna start with that, 'cause on the fifth, well, I did have my monthly administrator meeting, always enjoyable, very good conversation. And then also that day, it's one of my favorites, Vets Lunch.
It is very nice.
Men and women coming in, spouses, chicken keb, the whole nine yards. I love that. I love it, especially when it's not Election Day. Eight, I'm sorry, on the eighth, Scale meeting. On the twelfth, had a watershed, which we talked about some of the new rules changes. At least, there's some new rules that they're trying to adopt, and our staff is working with them, but I think the city has also made mention that we need to have a further conversation. They're kinda getting close and wanna vote on it, but it's kinda rising to the level of maybe the policymakers now. So we are gonna have some sort of a joint meeting, not necessarily all of us, but just with their board and staff, and probably myself and some of our staff, just to make sure that we're on the same page, 'cause no one wants double permitting, that's for sure. On the thirteenth, as was mentioned, MESB, that we're up for a couple grants for some, updating some nine-one-one equipment, so that was helpful. We were one of two counties, so.
You were.
Carver kinda nudged me and said, oh, we pay for our stuff, you can use it for free, but it is what it is. On the fourteenth, got a call from a church buddy, which you never know how that's gonna go. Says, hey, can I borrow your truck and your arms? I need a TV to get thrown away. I said, I know a place. I know a place. He already knew. He already, yeah, I knew, I know a guy. He already knew, so we, that was kind of a functional tour, my first functional tour of the hazardous waste facility, and that is a tight ship out there. And I'll tell you what, they didn't take it in that day necessarily, but they take mercury in. I'm thinking, who in the world, not just thermostats, like buckets of mercury. So I'm hopeful that anyone that's out there that has crazy chemicals, stop by, no one's gonna take your, you know, get that stuff out of, so it's not in the ground. So they got a place to put it, use it, it's there, please use it. And it was ten bucks for this two-ton DB. What a deal.
Is this a service that you provide now?
Well, well, if you, I'm trying to be a, you know.
Good neighbor.
Helpful person, yes. And I, and so if the...
And your phone number?
It's on the website.
It's listed. It's listed. So if I'm available, I'm usually willing. And if I'm not, I know a guy down there to my left. On the fourteenth, we had our Fish Conference, and that was a mental health topic, and I always kinda gauge, because there's always a topic of the month, which is, you know, which is great, but I always gauge, how are the questions? You know, someone does the presenting, and man, there were a lot of questions again with mental health. Canvas was there, which I didn't know she was related to Kubish. So I'm learning, you know, I've been at this county thirty years, but I'm still carpetbagger, so I'm learning who's who and what's what. And then on the eighteenth, as was mentioned, sat in the Prior Lake Workshop and the majority of the city council, and it was a volunteer recognition moment. But also, as we know, that that city is standing tall with this whole, is it Hurst Edvers Woodbury street impact fees, and that's gonna impact folks, cities in our county, so stay tuned for more information on that, but they're standing tall in that, and rightfully so. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since I saw you last, on the seventeenth, I had breakfast with Councilor Brennan from City Shockley, talked about issues of mutual interest between the city and the county, followed by the Scott County Transportation Committee with Commissioner Ulrich. The next day, AMC's statewide board meeting, I'm on that board as a District Ten representative, and we had our meeting talking about, among several topics, the most germane one is the annual convention coming up in St. Cloud in December. I hope you all have signed up to be there. Then I took a little vacation, someplace warm, came back on Sunday, so I could be here to be with you guys. Yesterday morning, I did attend the Scale Service Delivery Meeting at Savage City Hall. We heard from Heather Hogland, who's the new director of the Scott County Historical Society, had a great discussion with all the different cities that represented there about, it's the Scott County Historical Society, and how do we make sure that that's reinforced and actually put into play? I just had a discussion from Dr. Jesse Rudy about some of the data that we've hired her to help compile with particularly public safety things, right out of the chute. She's got some other things she's working on. And then a little follow-up by Leslie on the Public Health Nuisance Ordinance. It's out among the townships right now, and they're making constructive comments, and we had a good meeting there. And then last evening, I was privileged to be at the ribbon cutting for the Brentwood Court, I'm sorry, it was the groundbreaking, ribbon cutting's next year. This'll be the groundbreaking for Brentwood Court Part Two down in Jordan. Fun time was had by all. That's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ulrich.
On the sixth, the Parks Commission. The seventh, my monthly meeting with Leslie and the Fish Executive Committee, and the One Sixty-Nine Corridor Coalition that evening. Kevin Burkhardt is the new chair of the One Sixty-Nine Corridor Coalition, and Matt Lehman is the vice chair. On the eighth, the Scale meeting. Eleventh, Greater MSP Annual Meeting. The twelfth, the CDA. Thirteenth, MICA. Fish Monthly Meeting, there were a lot of questions. It was Guild and Canvas, and they really talked about their operations with the ERTS coming up. Then another meeting with One Sixty-Nine Corridor Coalition that night, and STA on the eighteenth, and then a little meeting, pre-tab meeting with Lisa Fries on the eighteenth last night. That's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. For my report on November fifth, after our board meeting, I also attended the Veterans Launch, a great event and a great turnout. Later that day, I had a meeting with our new MELSA executive director, Scott Vries. MELSA, of course, is our regional library association. Really just wanted to talk to him, how we really wanna get as much of our regional library dollars back to Scott County as we can. That evening, I attended the Jackson Township meeting. There were opening bids for their snow plowing, talking quite a bit about their part in the One Sixty-Nine Forty-One Project with some of the frontage roads. They have some questions and concerns, which hopefully they'll work out with our staff. November sixth, I had Academies of Shockley Steering Committee meeting, hearing about how things are going at Shockley High School with the new academies and our role, how our staff are being involved, how students are getting involved and seeing things at the county. November seventh, Leslie and I had a meeting with the mayor and city administrator of Jordan to talk about issues going on with Jordan and items of mutual concern. That evening, I attended Louisville Township meeting, similar to Jackson, a lot of talk about One Sixty-Nine Forty-One, the frontage roads, some of the agreements we need to make with snow plowing, especially for this winter and next winter, when there's some county roads that used to be township roads, township roads used to be county roads, lots going on there that we need to coordinate with. November eighth was the Scale meeting. On November eighteenth, had a meeting with several staff members and two of our district judges on juvenile and crossover youth, doing some brainstorming. Attended the Brentwood Terrace Groundbreaking, which I thought was for a chilly day, a good crowd. Last evening, attended part of the Human Services Resource Council meeting before I headed out to the Scott County Egg Society meeting, so. And then we all had the workshop on housing with Beacon this morning before our board meeting. So that's the end of my report. Moving on to county administrator, do you have any updates for us, Leslie?
Madam Chair, just a reminder, we have our annual planning workshop this Friday, the twenty-second, at nine o'clock at the Savage Environmental Learning Center. And then for the public, that the county offices, the majority of them will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the holiday Thanksgiving.
I imagine there'll be some areas still open, like our jail. All right. County attorney.
I'm all home.
Any reason to have a attorney-client meeting?
Madam Chair, there is not.
Wonderful, thank you. Following adjournment, we will be meeting in a workshop setting to receive information on crossover youth, diversion, and truancy. Any further business to come before this board?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting.